Moving on to realignment of elementary attendance areas.
I think three of the board members were at the meeting last Monday night, so I think they're aware. Are there any questions on the information that I shared with you at this point? Essentially, the community committee worked very diligently, took into account all the criteria that the board set. I included that. I included that for your review as well. In essence, what we have are two options that the committee liked very well, but met most of the needs of the board criteria moving forward. One, if you look at it, is the attendance area of option A, which oddly enough was just one that I did as an example, option A to start. But with the committee tweaking it, came up with the idea of using the physical barriers of the river canal and Highway 36 and the continue the Fox River up all the way beyond Tischkin. So using the east side, basically the community attending Trailside. And the changes to Evergreen's attendance, of course, would be the Tischkin Peninsula. And the changes to Woodfield's attendance would be the area that is towards Dover and Kansasville. And would be the area north of the canal, the Fox Knoll subdivision of Rochester.
Got a question, Helen?
Absolutely.
And we said that area in the Evergreen district, that's no impact right now? There's no current students?
The Tischkin, there are. There would be about...
In this part?
Right around 10, 12.
Okay.
Not many. So about 10 to 12 in that area. Historically, there haven't been a ton of students in that area, even though there are quite a few properties. I don't know if that's because they're seasonal or there aren't necessarily all of them are year-round. I'm not sure. I also included in there what the enrollments would look like based on that. It works towards equalizing the population of each school. The other one that the committee wanted to recommend to you, and I believe this one would have been had in the final vote, the committee liked both of these the most. And they did give a slight edge to this one, I believe was eight to five of the people who ended up voting. The 15 numbers, 13 voted. This is, was option D, which is sort of the inverse of the other one. What it is, is again the Tischkin area because that makes geographic sense in transportation minds. That seems to be one that makes the most sense. The other option was then that Fox Knoll neighborhood, the area in north of the canal to the current boundary, which is at the...
It's the Donut Bridge.
So what you have is the current boundary, but that, those students would remain students at Woodfield. So the Fox Knoll neighborhood would remain at Woodfield. Everything south of the canal and east of the river would become Trailside attendance area. So the change again for Evergreen would be the Tischkin Peninsula. And for Woodfield, again, would be the eastern portion of what currently attends. Woodfield. Again, when you look at the population, again, fairly equitable. Again, does a very similar job to the other one as well. To the other, both options.
Is the bus impact about the same?
About the same. The issue always is on that area of Rochester, east of the river and between 36th and the river, north of Main Street, Rochester, it's always a very crowded bus route. I think most of the issues really are going to be how sixth grade leaving the elementary routes. Most of the issues are going to be with the middle school, high school routes. That's where we're going to probably end up having to add some routes just because of crowded buses. So they'll be spending more time on that. But then again, you know, part of it has to do with efficiency on the route as well. I still think what you're going to end up doing is you're going to be shifting one bus route from Woodfield. Might be able to lose that one route from Evergreen as well. That's a, that's a long bus ride, no matter what, that comes through there. So maybe able to lose one bus route from Evergreen as well. Shifting some of that time over to Trailside.
So the numbers that you show in the chart there?
Those are current numbers. Those will be the numbers of this year's students attending.
Current numbers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does it, the way you have it in there, it's the same for both options?
Very similar.
Oh, okay, there's all those.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was one of my thoughts when I was reviewing it, like where you have, like it could be two or three sections just because you're bringing students together that haven't been together. And just thinking about staffing compared to where we are now. I would like to see us go with the three sections at the time we have the two slash three, just to err there. We're just coming back in like September or October and...
Same.
Yeah, because that's a lot of disruption for everybody.
Absolutely. No, I did explain that in the committee as well. What I wanted to do was apples to apples, so people understood. As we always have done here, really it has to do with the needs of the kids. So we get the adults in the school that the kids need. So some of those are going to be from the outset. Once a decision is made, then we start looking at what actual section numbers you'd need at which grade and which level. I'm assuming with some of the grandfathering, you're probably going to end up keeping some of the students you're going to have still for the next year or so, or you're going to have more sections at Woodfield than you might have in Trailside. So I think some of that is we will evolve into that moving forward. You know, it's because we're looking at down the road here, looking at a few years of that transition. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think we definitely will be looking at. Or we think we need more sections here on that side of the question.
And then the other question I had, other districts who have gone through the redistricting, what have they done for grandfathering? Because I, you know, you play that out, I think it's clear last year you wanted to finish it. But then what if they have a sibling who's in fourth grade there and fifth grade? And then, you know, how does that all play out? I don't want to ask families to have two elementary schools because that's a lot to manage sometimes.
Yes, it is. Speaking as someone who has forgotten to pick up their son from kindergarten, I do, I do realize that. I would say that what other districts have done is usually with students, they've allowed the grandfathering students who would be going into fifth grade to finish their career there. And it's the parents' choice whether they would, they can keep them doing it. And that's up to the board, we can keep that family together, but the next year they would have to attend their attendance area. So you, I mean, those are things, again, to keep family together, and you still would keep family together in that way too. So those are all things we can consider. And that's why it's really a couple-year transition. It's not, it's not a one-year transition. It's a couple-of-years transition. So that would probably be the, the most apathetic approach. And we tried to do that. So I would say that that would be worth the recommendation, to try and keep those families together. And we'll talk about that a little bit with open enrollment, is just see what our recommendations are. That we, between certain grade levels, we don't open it up for numbers next year. Our policy does allow for siblings and for students who have attended the school to be a lot opened enrollment. So we have always tried to make sure that there's safeguards for those families as much as possible. But again, just to reiterate, we're not, we're, in our mind, we're very much asking, we have three schools that are wonderfully high performing. We have wonderful staff members, some of them have caught it before. And the difference between Trailside and Woodfield, the principals aren't here, are merely going to be the names on top of the building. We have the same heart and the same mind on both buildings. They're wonderful places for, they're wonderful places for schools.
But parents will still have the option of potentially interdistant open enrollment, provided they provide transportation?
Correct, yeah. Transportation and, and the other thing that we always have would be class size. So for some of those, yeah. I mean, we always try to accommodate, absolutely. But some of that would be whether, you know, space for the...
Yeah.
Question off of that, if you're, if you're saying that if they could open enroll out of their area. You were saying about the fifth grader staying, that that be an option for them? Are you saying that they would get bused on or no?
No.
No, so they would be in the same boat, they would be?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, there would, I can't, I don't think logistically trying to run those buses, two buses down like it's just going to work.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't thought there because that sounds like a mess.
And then, under option A, you have early childhood and title at Trailside, early childhood and lead at Evergreen. And Woodfield has lead. But then under option D?
It would be the same.
It would be the same. And so does that put, I'm a strong opponent of our students with disabilities being in their neighborhood school?
Correct.
Does this put our students in their neighborhood school?
Yes, correct, it does. I mean, for, for instance, I think currently we have four Woodfield students who are attending Evergreen because the facility doesn't allow for those students to attend their home school. I think at this point, one of the, the, when we try and build equity in the system, you know, one of the things that we said when best interest of all students is really the students having equal access to services and buildings. As well as having, you know, that vice, also for the staff to have equal access to the services available to help students grow. One of the things that, you know, and I know that it's, it's not everybody sees it because they're not in the schools every day. Sometimes as adults, our view of school is based on our own experience when we were in school. And it's based on our memories, which are faulty. Our memories are chemical processed and they're faulty. So sometimes we don't, we don't remember everything that went on to make it a successful experience. And we also don't know that the professionals in those buildings know so much more than the professionals did when we were in school. You know, we've learned a lot. We, we see the growth in every student. And letting, having professionals be able to have access to all the tools that they need to have students grow is equitable. And that's part of what we want to do is building our, our professional leadership, teachers. And it's, and it's, it's a challenge, but it's also part of what we owe it to our professional staff and to our students in our community, that our students have the richest possible experience and our staff have all the tools necessary. And this plan right now, I think it's, either one of these would give us an opportunity to look that in place in a better way than we currently do.
And I hope that's just that we continue to grow that capacity so that if a student moves in in there on Trailside rather than if they have the opportunity to attend that school, that we would have the resources and staff to help them.
Well, and I think that's the thing when, when we talk about student autism, is our plan for next year is going from one facility that can adequately service all those needs to three. That's a huge jump on our part, going from one location to service students with early childhood needs to two. Again, is it where we want to be eventually? No, but it's all a growth process. We eventually want to be able to have every child being able to have the services that they need, no matter where they, where they live in our district. And this pushes us in that direction.
Early childhood still services?
Correct.
North Cape and Washington?
Absolutely, yeah. And we've seen that program, the needs in that program grow substantially from even when I started. So in my fifth year, I mean, this is, we started this year with two full-time teachers. Two sections, only in-house plus servicing students and other schools and daycares. So it's a challenge, again.
Two sections here plus servicing in our other schools plus the other schools and the daycares. So it's quite a large work crown.
Well, it is, it is a challenge for those staff members as well. We have two full-time teachers plus support staff. And many of those students have significant needs. But again, when you see the growth in many of these students, it's, it's been hard for me. I've learned a bit, but I really understand that. We, we really did disservice the students with exceptional needs in the past. We know so much more and those kids offer so much more to our community now than I think we gave them credit for in the past. So I think we have to continue to move forward and provide the best opportunities that we can for all students. And I think this is a good plan for that to start. It's not, we're not gone. I mean, I think, you know, we're going to have to live with this again. It's going to be ongoing.
And then I know I came up with the last community meeting, and I wasn't aware of it just from knowing all the roads and district boundaries. But there was one road where like half of it is our district. The other half is Burlington and those families that open enrolled into our district. Do we have any other roads like that that...
That's a subdivision, yeah.
That's the one down on 36?
Actually just met with a girlfriend, she was asking about that. And some of those families in that area receive a letter saying they would be moved. Said she received a letter she may, maybe be moved to Evergreen.
No, we didn't send that.
I was confused by that, so.
Yeah, I think on Riverview Parkway and Eagle, Eagle Ridge Drive, you do have, actually the line of the district comes through several of the properties. That's the only subdivision that I'm aware of that it happens. Obviously, on the eastern part of the district, that's right off 36th and up. But again, there's two river roads down there, but the river road that comes out of Park in Rochester. The other issue you do run into, of course, is all along the eastern border with people who go out in some of those smaller subdivisions as well. Some of them were told by realtors that they did live in Waterford School District. What they meant probably was Waterford being a high school. So I don't know if all realtors really understand the difference that it's key necessarily in that there's two school districts that service areas like that. I don't think it was intentional, but yeah.
What if we run the numbers like in those areas that are open enrollment with our district students? And that would be like, we kept some of the students together?
Look, yeah, I think that, I think those, those areas for us are pretty small. I mean, as far as the numbers of students.
That's what I figured, but I just wasn't sure.
I don't think you're looking at more than a couple of students.
And then my last question is, what's your angle to us at the board?
Well, I think we're under a little bit of a tight timeline here when we were looking at our numbers as well because we do have to start looking at staffing. So I would ask that the board makes a decision at the business meeting at the end of this month. And then we can start working towards what staffing will look like at each of the schools. The part of that will be, a good portion of staff already is being moved, moved to the middle school. So then you look at what sections we... We also have to devise for people who do want intra-district. We will have to put everybody on waiting list for the, until we have those, until we have those sections decided. So the longer we wait on that, the more difficult that is. It would be nice to have parents be able to know whether students attend by spring break or sooner.
Well, and then also, we were talking about registration, kindergarten registration, so we're still...
We push that up.
That is, yeah. That's why January is a good date. Not to mention our teachers, I mean, students and teachers are dressing up a little bit about it, you know, when they know, yeah.
What they found in other districts is that this is not any similar timeline to what was done before us. But by doing it on this timeline, it did give people the opportunity to, for the dust to settle and for them to be able to make those arrangements that they need to make, whether it's daycare, whether it's transportation. And so, and it gives some of those, those decisions made before, we have to worry about some other things coming up. We're not the size of the forest. We don't have the administrative staff they have unfortunately. And the resources, and we get in, when we start getting into the spring and the summer months, we're starting the real difficult portion of the project, which is renovation of those schools. So I'm not fooling myself into thinking that that's going to take less time.
As far as staffing, we go volunteers first to train?
Yes, we try, we'll, we'll try to accommodate people's wishes, however, that's going to be impossible. Just so you know, there are going to be people that, that, there, there, there'll be offered positions that they perhaps want to do first place.
Well, I mean, based on our survey, everyone just wants what they had to stay.
Yes.
Yeah. We did survey that last year, so there are some decisions.
I hate to take a COVID-15 and split it up.
Well, that's kind of why we've been, judging from this project, and that's why we've been working over the past two years on continuous improvement systems, hopefully it's going to come. But that's what, use the case for lifestyle. The idea, that's why we, one of the things that when we got, when I came, when I first arrived, and I think Jane and, Jane can attest to it, Sloan came a year later, but the silos in the buildings were not even the same team structure in each building. Across the board, there were, you know, there wasn't, there wasn't a cohesiveness across the district. People competed for resources. One of the things that we've really moved to is having a strong leadership team in each building, culture teams, and again, working with the same vocabulary. If someone's strong at a grade level, using them as a mentor, using them as that coach to help build around that team. And I think part of that, the expectation for each team and for each building and each grade level, having those people work together, it's been very thoughtful, but we were, we were thinking ahead on that because we knew that that was going to happen, that it was going to be that possibility. If you have eight sections of fourth grade, and we only need seven sections, but that's going to, you know, somebody's going to move, you know? So those are things that, that will happen. And is it, is it sad to see some of the cohesive people who enjoy working together? Absolutely. But this also gives them an opportunity to work with other people. And in a, in a field that really, there is a tendency to become sometimes complacent in, in the area you're in. It, it's not always a bad idea to have some change. Some staff members enjoy that, some are very reluctant to try. And we are aware of that. We've had those discussions with people.
Well, for some staff members, this will be their second go-around because, I mean, I was working here, Jane too, when, you know, Maple View and Evergreen, you know, when Trailside and Woodfield opened up. And that was difficult. I remember a lot of those conversations. But I look at what grew out of that and, you know, and how the people grew and, you know, they all rose to vacation. And so it's, you know, it's a whole big journey.
Yeah.
Yeah, this doesn't, I mean, the idea here is that we do value our, our team members, no matter who they are. And it, it's going to be, some people, you know, that change is a challenge, without a doubt. For everybody it is. But we already looked at, like you said, in the meeting, a couple, in the meetings a couple times, we're looking at, you know, 20% of our students attending another building next year or a new building. And staff to go along with that. So this is probably the opportunity where everybody, you know, the one thing that everybody has in common next year is the change that's going on. And helping each other through that, I think is an important thing. Especially as we've really embraced multi-level systems of support.
Equitable.
Equitable multi-system of support and our, and our inner value structure. You know, being kind, caring, diligent, you know, those are our values. Trying to live to our mission, live to our vision. Not doing something because it looks good on paper, but doing some, doing things that are based on evidence and trying to offer a better experience to children, families, and helping staff grow. This is, all of these things here, the change is sometimes scary, but we ask our students to change every day. And we have to have courage, and we ask our students to have to. That's important.
So I don't know if any other board members have any strong feelings regarding one of these options, having attended three of the four meetings and, you know, listening to the committee and all the work they put into. I don't know that I have a strong, super strong opinion one way or the other. But I guess I would lean towards option D since that did get the most votes. As Dawn mentioned before, I do have some concerns regarding the class sizes increase. But I know that, as always, we will err on the side of caution and provide that support that we need. And we have great staff, so I have no, you know, worries about, about that. But I guess that would be where I would lean. What others think?
That's pretty much where I was leaning. Just a question, option D includes the Muska Quagmire Ranch, but how Canadian does that?
Correct, because the canal is dividing here. What's that?
Because the canal runs through there, we're using that as a...
The canal is a river.
But is that the same bus route?
Currently, yeah. But I think what would happen is...
They tweak, they tweak.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's okay because that was very crowded, that was the most crowded bus for, I think that was bus route number four for Woodfield.
I would just echo to that, I think I would favor option D if I just look at, it's like the, this, we're obviously losing six grade breaks in numbers down, but D also has the little, little bit more numbers staying at Woodfield, which I think is a little bit less of an impact, more people in the community. So even though the numbers maybe don't look as equitable, I think it's less impacted and still manageable where we want to be. So I would favor that option.
I think that was part of the discussion from the committee as well.
Having attended a couple of meetings, I, I gotta give kudos to the committee. Having attended a couple of meetings, I, I gotta give kudos to the committee for all the work they did. They, there was a lot, a lot of thought when you do that.
A lot of thought and a lot of sincerity, I mean, those were, those were people who knew it was a challenge. And again, you know, being someone who volunteered for something, not necessarily knowing what it is on the outside, they accepted the challenge. It's very, very heartening to know that there are people in the community who take these issues seriously or willing to put in time and effort. And it was a lot of work, and it, and it was a long time, you know, it was, you know, it was months of work there.
I think seeing them go through the different options and being able to put all that work into an option and then scrap it when it didn't come out.
Yeah.
You know, it's a, maybe a favorable option. I appreciate that thought process too, to get to that working point and just eliminate it if it didn't fit what the needs were, so it seemed like there was a lot of good work there.
Having gone to most of them, and second what Ryan said about, I was actually really impressed with the, how they did go through everything, that they were all open to new ideas and, oh, I didn't see that, oh, the, the discussion was great. And having followed all of them, you know, I, I lean towards option D as well. I think the busing is less impacted, and just having watched all the discussions that they did, it just, it just makes the most sense, but I realize we're taking a vote later, or just guys, you know, but I guess they know how you're going to do it, but that's my input.
Yeah, too.
It's the details that are going to be, with all the open enrollment, those are going to be a lot harder to work through, so.
Absolutely, I'm looking forward to, I mean, it's going to be, to be honest with you, there's, we're, we, we have more work over the next two months than I think we've ever, that's a concern.
What's the timeframe to be for the open enrollment in the district?
Well, the, in the district, everyone who currently is attending are going to be the students that we want to see first. That's why we want, want to get it done in March at the latest, because statewide open enrollment opens February, first of February.
Any other discussion on this? Open enrollments?